We have a warm.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and start the December seventeen twenty twenty one. Saint Paul Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held remotely. As it's not practical nor prudent for the commission and its committees to meet in person or pursuant to Minnesota statute. Uh, in light of the ongoing covid health, covid nineteen health pandemic. Uh, it's not feasible for commission members to be present at the regular location. And all members of the planning commission will attend this meeting by telephone or other electronic means. Um, we will go ahead and start today's meeting by doing a roll call. Sonya.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Cantner?
Here.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Presley? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Here.
Commissioner Said? Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
And of course, the chair.
Here.
That's it.
Thank you. So we do have, I do have two announcements before turning it over to Director Padilla. Um, the first announcement is our status on continuing to appear remotely. It's my understanding the, that the city council voted to extend um permission for us to continue to appear remotely, at least through the beginning of January, at the very beginning of January. But it's also very possible that that will be extended, especially given the ongoing uh variants and whatnot that's happened. Um, so we, uh, Luis and I, well, Luis has been in, in discussions with me and sort of keeping me updated on that. And I would just like to let the commissioners know that um it's staff's intention to let commissioners know with as much notice as possible, if and when we are set to return to in person, so that people can make uh plans accordingly. The, but again, it, it sounds like while um the current permission only goes to the first, to the, up to the first week of January, it sounds like it's, there's a possibility that again might be extended. The second announcement that I have is with regards to uh committee chairs and um committee assignments, as well as officers of the planning commission. Uh, if I, I think last year we, we did a survey and we uh about whether there would be any interest in anybody who would want to take up a leadership role. Or, or if there was any committee chairs who wanted to step down. I think everybody who is a committee chair at the moment, except for maybe perhaps Commissioner Underwood, has recently undertaken that task. Um, but if for whatever, any, for whatever reason, there's a chair that would like to perhaps uh give up that role for whatever, you know, if, if it's too time consuming or um really whatever reason it is. Um, or if there are individuals who have an interest in either next year or at some other time, serve as a chair or as an officer. I think what Luis is gonna be doing is sending out a survey just to see what interest is out there. Uh, just to give people an opportunity to serve in various functions. Um, or whether individuals would like to try to change committees. Um, you know, I think there'll be a question about that as well. So please let us know your interest. Um, committee assignments are based on availability. So i- i- even if someone wants to move, uh depending on availability might not be feasible. But you know, it, it, it would be good for us to, to understand where people are at and what it is that they're seeking to, to work on in, in the upcoming year. So I think that's all I have. I'll turn it over to Director Padilla and, and see what, what comments he has.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I might um suggest, if you don't mind, um uh, let, just letting me know via email, we, we did do a survey last year and we had, you know, more new members and more vacancies. This year, we don't have a lot of vacancies. Um, and we have a lot of new chairs. So if, if you do feel strongly about um joining a different committee or potentially stepping up into a officer or a committee chair position, let me know and then we can sort of uh see what we want to do then, if that works. Um, I have two additional announcements today. Um, wanted to give a little update on the anti-displacement and community wealth building RFP. Uh, some of the commissioners, or you may remember that we did a, an RFP um and uh got some responses from it. And so we're getting to the process now of um reviewing. Uh, we've, we've interviewed two teams. We're down to making the decision for a consultant team. That consultant team would be looking at a variety of different tools, including inclusionary zoning, uh which I know is of big interest to the commit, uh to the commission. Uh, we hope to have that consultant team selected ASAP and begin contract negotiations with them for their work uh going into twenty-two. Uh, Tony Johnson and I have been working on that along with other members of PED's housing and economic development teams. So more to come. And second, I wanted to introduce our new staff person. Uh, his name is Spencer Johnson. Spencer is gonna jump on camera to say hello. Uh, Spencer is a senior city planner. He'll be uh serving as a planning liaison to District One Southeast Community, um supporting us on zoning studies such as an update to the East Grand Avenue zoning overlay and updates to our T districts. Uh, originally from Minnesota, Spencer has been a planner and an urban designer and project manager in private practice in California for about ten years. Um, and so um I will, um, I'm very excited and I'll let Spencer talk a little bit more about his experience. Uh, excited to uh welcome him and wanted to uh introduce him to the planning commission. Welcome Spencer.
Thank you, Luis. Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. Yeah, I just started this week. My name's Spencer Johnson. Luis did a great comprehensive intro kind of on me, but um I'm, I'm based in California and moving over to Minnesota in the next couple of months. Looking forward to getting back after ten years out here. Um, I've specialized in long-range planning and zoning in California, a lot on form-based codes and some place-based approaches. So I'm looking forward to um working with the team on that in, in a greater capacity. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Chair, that's all I had, unless you had questions for me or anybody else.
Are there any questions for the director? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is zoning committee, Commissioner Riley.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you, uh commissioners. Uh, we last met, the zoning committee last met on December ninth. Um, and we had two cases um at that time. Um, the first was a rezoning for eighty-three Douglas. Um, sorry, uh, which was for a um rezoned from R four-one family residential to RT two townhouse residential for uh the, the construction ultimately uh planned for a construction of uh housing for veterans at risk of homelessness. These are folks who have um been homeless and are now getting back on their feet, um need to have a permanent place to, to, to live. Um, and uh the staff recommendation was to approve the rezoning. And the committee uh voted seven, uh nothing in favor um of the motion. Um, District Nine made no recommendation at the time, and um we had three folks who spoke in support and two letters um in support. We also had eight letters in opposition. Um, the opposition was mainly concerned about um the folks who would be living there and the impact on the neighborhood um with sort of more uh density than is there now. Um, and the property is close to um the Salvation Army and the hospital complexes um off of West Seventh in the Little Bohemian neighborhood. So that's that was our first item. Um, so the motion out of committee is for approval for rezoning from R four-one family residential to RT two townhouse residential um at eighty-three Douglas. And of course, this goes on to the city council next. Um, and I can take questions, comments, or if there's anything the rest of the committee thinks I have missed, um please feel free to add. And I see, well, that's all I've got, Chair, on that one. Mr. Wade has his hand up.
Okay. Are there any questions for the Chair or for Mr. Wade? Oh, Mr. Wade, uh, do you have a question or a comment?
Good morning, Chair. Uh, thank you, Chair and Commissioner Riley. Um, just this morning, early this morning, we did receive a letter from the Fort Road Federation uh saying that they had only just met on December thirteenth, and the board voted unanimously in favor uh of supporting this rezoning. Um, just to take a blurb from their letter, they say, Charles Stevens, who's the applicant, Charles' proposal for the site, assuming approval of the rezoning, is to build affordable housing for veterans in the form of four discreet tiny homes of about five hundred and fifty square feet each. The lot is large enough for full off-street parking with alley access. Charles' proposal was particularly attractive to the board because it adds density, uh provides much-needed affordable housing and supports veterans, all while keeping the scale of the neighborhood. Uh, and so they voted unanimously to support it. Thank you.
Good to know. So uh the motion coming out of committee is to approve a rezone from R four to RT two townhouse residential at eighty-three Douglas Street. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none. Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner, Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Uh, hi, Sonya, Naeda, Commissioner Naeda Presley here. I vote yes. I'm a little bit late, so I apologize.
I didn't know you were here at all. I didn't see your name either, but okay, I got you. Thank you.
Okay.
So unanimously, that uh motion passes to rezone eighty-three Douglas um from R four to RT two. Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so our, our second item was actually continued uh to our next meeting, um which will be uh on December thirtieth. Um, but I'll give a brief summary, just so folks um have a, a quick understanding of what we were discussing. Um, this item is a non-conforming restaurant, uh an expansion of existing non-conforming restaurant at seventy-nine um Western um at Holly, which is a legal non-conforming restaurant known as um Commodore. Um, and uh the property was initially built as an apartment hotel. It has functioned as a um condo and with a condo structure with restaurant underneath. I'm really sorry, I'm a little under the weather today and I'm not tracking this very well. But the long and short of it is that uh Mr. Robb, the applicant, was not able to be contacted uh or heard from during the meeting. And so we laid it over so that Mr. Johnson could have um a conversation with him about some of the um things that we brought up about that were brought up by the neighborhood and have been brought up a number of times by neighbors about the access into the condo underground parking versus the access into the restaurant space. Um, so in order to allow Mr. Johnson to talk to the applicant, um we laid the item over to uh December thirtieth. Um, and we can take questions, but you'll see us again um in the new year on this item. Uh, so that, I think that completes my report. Um, other than our next meeting is on December thirtieth.
All right. Thank you for that, Commissioner Riley. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee, Commissioner Holt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, the Comprehensive Neighborhood uh Planning Committee met on, I believe, December first. Um, we uh got a rehash of Religious Uses Zoning Study from uh, from city staff, Bill. Um, and the, I assume, Bill, that you have a little bit of presentation because we had quite a few changes uh from what was originally proposed.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Holt. Uh, Chair Ron Homer Ellis, I do have a presentation uh updated from Comp and Neighborhood Planning Committee uh to share with you today, so I can do that now. Bring you up to date with how things have changed since your public hearing on October ti- on October twenty-ninth. And um what is recommended here today by the committee and by staff is significantly different. So uh the Religious Accessory Uses zoning study, you might call it now just the Religious Uses zoning study because uh based on what we heard in our testimony, many of these uses we were lumping into accessory are really uses, and, and that's how they're being treated in the um substantially reorganized amendments that are, are before you. So what I'd like to review for you today is the, the testimony that we heard uh and saw. There are, you know, we heard from over a hundred and fifty people in writing and, and we had a couple dozen here speaking in person, online and person on October twenty-ninth. So we heard a lot from folks. I'll, I'll review that testimony, some of the highlights. Of course, it's in the memo in more detail as well. Um, go over what's changed in the proposal, what it means for religious institutions, what it means for recreation centers, which seems like a leap, but um hopefully you'll understand that as we work through this. And then a reminder on the timeline, because we, we do have a court order to get everything done by February first. Um, so we do intend to do that. Uh, testimony, some of the highlights of what we heard from public testimony are that um the, the prohibition that was actually struck on October twenty-ninth at the beginning of hearing, the hearing, uh the prohibition on new buildings or building additions for accessory uses. Uh, a lot of people said that is a burden on growing congregations, many of whom serve immigrant communities or people of color. Uh, so that's unduly burdensome, is what we heard from, from quite a few people. Uh, we also heard that many of the uses that were listed in, at that time as accessory are really considered primary to religious mission by the uh religious institutions themselves and their membership. We heard that there are many valued community services provided at religious institutions that complement government efforts. And if, if these uh churches and synagogues and mosques weren't doing it, then the government or somebody would have to do it instead. Uh, we heard that many of these institutions have multipurpose spaces, whether it's for their own use or the community's use, and often that blends together. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's for religious education one night, for a wedding reception uh on Sunday maybe, and um you know, it could be Boy Scout meeting on Tuesday night. So it's quite a variety of uses. Once the space is in place, it gets used for a lot of things. Um, we heard that mosques do not want to face a public process for conditional use permits or anything else because they fear discrimination, and there has been discrimination elsewhere in the region and court cases about that, and they, they don't want to face a public process. Another thing we heard about conditional use permits is there was a proposal at that, at that time for a conditional use permit to be required for social and community services over one thousand square feet. We heard from some folks that one thousand square feet is too low of a threshold, and we heard from quite a few people that it is confusing. Uh, there are many things that could be construed as social and community services, at least in the public, uh if, if not in city offices. And that um could be confusing, and if we do have a conditional use permit requirement for, for use, we should uh define it as clearly and narrowly as possible. There is more testimony as well, but these are just some of the highlights. We heard from so, so many people, it's hard to um characterize all of it, but these are some of the highlights. So what has changed? Uh, the recommendation coming before you is significantly different, as I mentioned. It's different in terms of the structure. Uh, the conditional use permit requirements are different. The limitations and standards are, are different, and there are a couple of expanded definitions for certain principal uses um that are before you for consideration today. So with regard to the structure before, there was a definition for religious accessory uses proposed in the code. Uh, that is scrapped, and instead now most of the desired uses would fall under two principal use definitions, religious institution or community center. Community center, I'll get into that in a bit, is not actually in code right now, but there is a um non-commercial recreation definition, so that, the title of that is changing and it's being expanded to allow more uses. So most of the desired uses we had categorized as accessory use are now falling under one of those two principal use definitions. Uh, secondly, daycare and preschool is handled in its own definition, and I'll, I'll get into that in a bit. And um overnight shelter for up to twenty-five adults and homeless services are still categorized as accessory uses, so that, those two did not change. What has changed with regard to conditional use permits? Before, they were proposed to be required for social and community services over one thousand square feet in residential districts. Now, the CUPs are not necessary for any allowable use in religious institutions in any district, except certain homeless services facilities. Just as, a- as uh was passed by the city council or mirroring what was passed by the city council a month or so ago. Um, a CUP would be required for homeless services facilities over seven thousand square feet in residential districts. So it'd be treated similarly um to how it is treated in the mixed-use and business districts in any location. Now it'd be treated that way for religious institutions in residential districts as well. So overall, far fewer uses would require a conditional use permit, is how I would characterize that. The limitations um and standards for uses have generally relaxed. What was proposed before is that emergency housing and overnight shelter would be limited to ten adults plus children in their care. And what's proposed now is that overnight shelter is limited to twenty-five adults, so that's increased. And no limit at all on emergency housing. And it's often asked, what's the difference between these? Generally speaking, overnight shelter is different people every day. It empties out in the morning. People take their possessions with them, think the Dorothy Day Center. Um, and emergency housing is a little more stable than that. It's people experiencing homelessness who have uh temporary residence there for a month or two months, and then they move on to, to somewhere else. Their, their stuff's there every day. They go back to the same residence, but it's not an apartment building. So it's, it's still a, a special kind of congregate living. Uh, so overnight shelter is proposed to be limited to twenty-five adults. We have very little of that in the city. And emergency housing, which we see more often, including at religious institutions, at least before covid, that's proposed to not be limited by the zoning code. I will mention, though, that building code and fire code limits continue to apply. Um, when emergency housing is temporary, there are some requirements. And when emergency housing is permanent, there are many more requirements, and they tend to be pretty expensive, things such as sprinklers or sewer access charges. So I, I just, you know, just because the zoning regulations are permissive in that regard doesn't mean that we will see emergency housing everywhere because it actually would be quite expensive to implement. Uh, another change in the limitations is that homeless services um and really all social community services over one thousand square feet required a conditional use permit. And now homeless services, as I mentioned, would be treated to the same standards that they are elsewhere. And, and it would just be expanded where they can go to now also religious institutions and residential districts, plus all the districts they were allowed in before, with the same standards. Conditional use permit over seven thousand square feet, have to have a litter plan, have to engage with law enforcement and district council, and have to have a point of contact provided. So those are, are conditions that the city council just put on that use elsewhere in the city. Uh, daycare and preschools in religious districts used to have to be in former religious institutions, and, and we didn't really address that um clearly previously. What's proposed now is that daycares and preschools are allowed in current religious institutions as well. So you'll see a zoning code amendment to that effect. I mentioned that the religious institution definition is expanded compared to what was on the table October twenty-ninth. At that time, there were no changes proposed to the definition. The definition in code right now focuses only on worship and clergy housing, and that would be expanded to now include gathering space, religious education facilities, and other spaces for religious exercise. That term religious exercise, by the way, comes straight from Ralupa, uh the Religious uh Institutions uh in Religious Uses and Institutionalized Persons Act, whatever that is. Um, it talks quite a bit about religious exercise, and, and so um we thought it appropriate to mirror that term here in, in this definition. This includes a lot of things that religious institutions do. Arguably, they couldn't have done it before, but it really clarifies that it's more than just worship going on. And, and we heard that in testimony from quite a few people. We do more than just worship here. There's also expand, an expanded community center definition, so this is pretty interesting. We did have non-commercial recreation in the code, uh and it was used mainly for city recreation centers or other recreation centers. And there were standards involved there, um including that it had to have direct access to an arterial street. Major thoroughfare is what it says in the code, but that by reference means arterial street, and it needed a conditional use permit in residential districts. Now, what's proposed, that community center's definition is expanded, includes everything that was a non-commercial recreation. Uh, you know, your typical recreation center use, but also a lot of what happens at um community centers in the city, like the Arlington one, uh or at religious campuses as well. So um, you know, your, your uh law clinics or your blood drives or your after-school programs or all that sort of thing would fall under this new community center definition. Uh, there would be no need to be an arterial street. That's proposed to go away, and I'll, I'll uh go into why that might be appropriate in a, a slide or two. And also no conditional use permit if you're on a uh religious institution campus in a residential district. The CUP requirement would remain for any private community center that were to pop up, but it's proposed that um government agencies, religious institutions, and tax exempts organizations could do it without a conditional use permit, and that's based largely on our history uh with these types of places and, and how they've caused little problems in residential districts. So what would this mean for religious institutions? Well, here are some examples. I'll just run, run down. Preschools would be allowed by zoning, food shelf allowed by zoning, uh receptions like wedding receptions or, or graduation receptions allowed by zoning, music performances uh allowed by zoning, blood drives allowed, community meetings allowed. All, all these allowed at religious institutions going forward, regardless of the zoning district. Voting, it's already allowed. It actually is in code that's allowed everywhere in the city, um so that, that would be clear. Uh, emergency housing is proposed to be allowed by zoning. Of course, there are building code and fire code issues still, but allowed by zoning. And then the final three on this list are a little more complicated. Homeless services facilities would be treated uh just like they are in mixed-use and business districts. Generally elsewhere in a city, they'd be treated the same way for religious institutions in residential districts. Uh, so conditional use permit over a certain side of, size, over seven thousand square feet. Overnight shelter would be allowed with a limitation still of up to twenty-five adults plus children in their care. So that's increased what, from what was previously proposed. And uh accounting offices, travel agency offices, there actually is accounting offices, travel agency offices, there actually is not proposed to be any change with regard to those compared to the current practice. Those would still need a zoning letter from the city, just like now. And and we think those types of uses actually work pretty well under the current process. They are similar to home occupations. If they are very similar to home occupations, one or two employees, very few customers, appointment only. The current process, just getting a letter from the city, it works pretty well. I wanted to address a particular religious institution where there is no code amendment to address their concern. This would be Saint Peter Claver, and we heard from somebody that they intend to build on this parking lot in the future, some form of senior living. And they are zoned for single-family residential at this time, and and so they would only be allowed under the current zoning to have up to six residents there because of the single-family zoning. However, in this particular case, I'll just note the context. You know, the site here itself is very close to I ninety-four and Lexington Parkway, right at that interchange. It's got T-two zoning immediately adjacent to it, RM-two multifamily zoning, very close. And so it is very easy to imagine, and the plans would seem to support a rezoning of this property to a district that would allow exactly what they want to do. So if they wanted to do senior living for a greater number of people, say fifteen people or thirty people, there is a logical way to do that through a rezoning process, so we we are not addressing that through the code amendments on the table, though, today. City recreation centers, I wanted to get into this a little bit. I mentioned that we don't have a history of problems with some of the current standards, and so they're they are proposed to be relaxed. That includes having direct access from a parking lot of a a rec center to an arterial street. That is the standard in the code. And there's a requirement for conditional use permits in many districts, including all these residential districts. Our history with these is that the conditional use permit is almost a rubber stamp. There is a very thorough public process that occurs. You know, we just had the Rice Community Center come forward, and the Parks had been working, the Parks Department had been working on that for a year. And they had a very thorough public process as to design the property. And then, you know, after all of that, after all the issues have been figured out, then they come to the planning commission requesting a conditional use permit. And on top of that, they did not have access to an arterial street, and so they needed to modify that condition. If they hadn't had a CUP, they would have needed a variance from that. But if you look at all these recreation centers in the city, and these are not the only ones in this situation, Rice, Martin Luther King, Dames Bluff, all of these on the list are in residential zoning districts and require a CUP, and they don't meet the standard for having access to an arterial street from their parking lot. So it's, you know, and we haven't had major issues with these. It seems like going forward, we are unlikely to have issues with arterial access or a need for a conditional use permit for these sorts of things. And so what's proposed is that if a community center is operated by a religious institution, tax-exempt organization or a government agency, that it is just allowed in just about every zoning district. The timeline coming up is we have actually advertised a public hearing for January twelfth already, just a basically a hold-the-date notification. After you make your recommendation today, we will forward your recommendation to the city council and put out another public notice with that being part of it, so that people can review your recommendation and participate in the hearing on January twelfth. And then the city council essentially has two dates to make a decision. It will be before them on January twen- on January nineteenth, and if they need an extra week, we've got one extra week for them. So I feel like I've been talking a lot. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thanks a lot for your time this morning.
So the discussion at the at the Conference of Neighborhood Planning Committee was basically around clarification questions, scenario questions. And I think Bill addressed all those that we brought up during the committee meeting. The vote was unanimous, I believe, and there was really no objections, but if there are any or if somebody had some, we'd certainly take questions or comments.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Host. So I think we would need a motion coming from you to recommend approval of the draft code amendments and refer it to the city council.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second on the motion?
Second, Commissioner Presley.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Host, second by Commissioner Presley, to adopt the draft code amendments for the Religious Uses zoning study, seconded by Commissioner Presley. Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Dermody and Commissioner Holst. I think I just want to note that this is a really well-thought-out change. I was a little disappointed by the previous amendments proposed, and I think that this is really well-thought-out and very clear. And I appreciate the time that the committee and the staff took to produce produce a document and amendments that really seemed to meet both the needs of the federal jurisdiction over us and the and the community. I appreciate how how well folks listen, so thank you very much.
Any additional questions or discussion?
Other than to say that I would, you know, second Commissioner Riley's comments there, that that what's before us today, I think, is just a an excellent piece of work, obviously done under a timeline. And Mr. Derm- Dermody, we really appreciate the the effort that you put in this, and I and I do agree that this is a very well-thought-out at this point.
All right, and I see that Commissioner Moore agrees as well. So again, no additional discussion. We'll go ahead and take a vote on the motion.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Katner?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
And Chair Rangel Moreland?
I'm a yes as well.
Unanimous.
So the motion passes to recommend approval of the draft code amendments to the Religious Uses zoning study and forward that to city council. Commissioner Host on the next item?
Very good. The next item is duplex-triplex conversion guidelines. And this is, again, we reviewed a draft resolution to discontinue the use of the guidelines by staff. Mostly, this is a situation where to align better with our comprehensive comprehensive plan for the city, we had some technical problems. If you decide to do a duplex or triplex conversion, that that many times resulted in staff recommending against a duplex or triplex conversion, that ultimately that by technicality, they had to recommend against, but overall, thought was a good program. Mr. Wade, I don't know if you want to do any other comment on this?
Good morning, the Chair, Commissioner Holst. I don't have any additional comment. This is, well, I guess I do as I go on and comment. Just that this is something that has been brought up time and again among the commission and by staff. It's full of some great ideas. These guidelines for duplex-triplex conversion were generated over the past, especially as illegal units had been found. And DSI and Public Works and PED all had to coordinate to figure out what to do with these. These guidelines are not just disappearing into the mist. Staff is taking these and still integrating many of them into our processes as zoning cases come up and other situations are found to ensure that we still have high-quality housing in the city. That's all. Thank you.
So the recommendation coming out of the Conference of Neighborhood Planning Committee is to adopt the duplex-triplex conversion guidelines.
Would, oh, Commissioner Yang?
Good morning, everyone. I think this is a very serious issue. I hope we can do some further due diligence. Especially when we had the committee meeting, I asked if we could further examine the proposal from city of Minneapolis, because they obviously they have the same issue as what we have to provide more affordable housing within our city areas. As far as the materials provided, I think Minneapolis has a little bit reservation, especially for the internal ADUs, something like that. So I think since we are very close to each other, why don't we learn a little bit more why they have some reservations, but we don't. Historically, duplex or triplex conversion guidelines was proposed. There should be have some reasoning behind that, or whatever we need to modify that, I agree, but abolish it completely without any additional concern. Personally, I don't think that's a very, you know, smart thing to do. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
All right, so I I see Commissioner Grill has her hand up, but I'll turn over to Mr. Wade to see if he has any comments on that on Commissioner Yang's points.
Thank you, Chair. I I think I'm not understanding everything that the commissioner is referencing, especially talking about the city of Minneapolis. And I'm not aware of similar requirements that they have that are on top of their zoning code for staff recommendations for handling zoning cases involving duplex and triplex conversions. Duplex and triplexes are still subject to our zoning code, as well as plan review, building permit, fire certificate of occupancy in some cases. And they they still go through an array of all of these permitting and review processes. And so I would like to hear more specifics, if the commissioner is willing, about what what we would be learning from the city of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Commissioner Yang, would you like to add further on on your comments?
Yes. I I couldn't identify the the detailed materials, but I think we have discussed that when we have the committee meeting. Maybe Chair can provide more thing here.
Okay, I I I think is it's Commissioner Yang, is your question what is your question about whether city the city has looked in its decision to make these recommendations at whatever Minneapolis is doing? And perhaps a historical context of why these guidelines were required in to begin with?
Well, I think for duplex, triplex, at least the guideline before us has some detailed standard, for example, the plot area or something like that. Right now, the recommendation obviously is to abolish all those wisdom we have accumulated before us up to the date. So I don't know why abruptly we don't need this, need those guidelines anymore.
So, Mr. Wade, I think that's the question. I think it's the the question is, is what is the basis for removing? So the way I understood it is, if we had a need for them before, what is the rationale for eliminating them now?
Thank you, Commissioner Yang, for the clarification. Thank you, Chair. These were developed at a time, again, when there were many units being discovered in buildings across the city. And the departments, Department of Safety and Inspection and Planning and Economic Development especially, had to really get on the same page and make a cohesive statement about criteria below which a zone a zoning case would not be approved. And so these involved a lot of the criteria that are straight out of the zoning code and aren't being erased from the zoning code, that is lot area minimums, things like that. And then some that are on top of it, so stricter lot area minimums, for instance. Requirements that an applicant needs to secure their building permit in order for a zoning case to be approved. These are elements that are being kept in different forms. So for instance, we have staff has standard conditions that we place on zoning cases so that we could, for instance, bring a rezoning case or a non-conforming use permit case or a variance case that if approved would allow a conversion, but then we can place a condition on it and say that staff recommends approval of this with the condition that they secure a building permit to improve the building up to Minnesota Building Code or a residential code. Or with a lot area, so so that's an example of the wisdom not not being gone at all, but just staff not being bound to recommend denial without that element. Another are some of the, well, we brought up lot area minimums. The zoning code has lot area minimums. The guidelines direct staff, require staff to recommend denial if a zoning, if a property does not have even greater lot area. These are zoning minimums that, for instance, we're studying right now with the one-to-four unit housing study. We look at these frequently and understand them, and it has been the commission and staff's opinions that there should not be extra para-zoning, and that's my term, but para-zoning limits. So for instance, if I've say you're in RT one and it's, you'll need six thousand square feet in order to build a duplex, or we're we're not agreeing that there should be minimums that didn't go through a zoning study process. And so I I think I want to assure the commission that the wisdom isn't being lost, it's being reevaluated, and staff is being freed to take that wisdom into account in addition to our typical staff review of these zoning cases and recommend approval if a nuanced look at a particular case is deemed worthy through through our review. Again, this this just is a requirement for staff recommendation. It it doesn't bind to the commission, it doesn't bind the council. It is really a a technicality that obscures the conversation more than informs it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Wade. Commissioner Yang?
Yeah, I I think the explanation is too vague, because there's no specific cases. Yeah, I, I think the explanation is too vague because there's no specific cases presented before us. So I'm not sure if I understand the reasoning behind that recommendation now. I think there are a lot of work need to be done to help us understand the logic behind today, our recommendation today, why we need to abolish those standards. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Yang. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Grill if she still has a question.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Grill. I think it's more of a comment than a question. I've been one of the commissioners, particularly at zoning committee, that has felt hamstrung by the duplex and triplex convergent guidelines. I think we've had a lot of good projects in front of us. And the guidelines, because they are not binding, the staff might give you a recommendation that is a great recommendation for a project. You read through the whole recommendation and then you get to the bottom and staff has denied the recommendation, or staff has denied the project. And you have to go through a pretty tricky process to try to work through the logic and determine if it was just the duplex and triplex conversion guidelines that were preventing staff from, from doing a recommendation. And I think there are enough guidelines and rails between the zoning code, the building occupancy rules that help rein in sort of unconstrained conversions. And this would allow us to approve better projects that come before us. So I'm very much in favor of removing the guidelines.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Moore than Commissioner Holt.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. And, excuse me, Staff Wade, thank you. Try to work on my protocols. One day I'll get it, y'all, I promise. Um, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Yang. And, and, and this, so this question is for Commissioner Grill. Can you just give me like an anecdote, like an example of like, just like one property? And why it was denied based on the guidelines, just so we can have, I think, I think that's what's missing is, is more context. Because that would be helpful. Because I, I agree with Commissioner Yang.
Commissioner Grill, would you take a stab at that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do my best. And if staff feel the need to interject, please do. So oftentimes, we have a case coming with a small landlord that would like to add an additional unit in their building. Say they have a duplex and they have a basement that they'd like to convert to a triplex. And because of the stringency of the recommendations, specifically around things like lot area, they're not allowed to add that unit to the building. So we had an example on the west side last year who was an excellent applicant who was a landlord trying, you know, from every, from every indication, sort of trying to do their best in this situation, trying to add another unit to their building. And the duplex and triplex conversion guidelines prevented him, or at least prevented staff from making a recommendation on that particular property. And this might be a place Michael Wade has a hand up where he might be able to assist as well.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. Yeah, on that property, it was a duplex. The gentleman wanted to convert it to a triplex by converting the basement into an apartment. The case was a rezoned from an RT1 to RT2. In RT2, there's a lot area minimum of 2,000 square feet per unit. So to have three units, you would need 6,000 square feet. I think the property had over that, the property had closer to 7,000, I'm forgetting right now. The duplex-triplex conversion guidelines required 9,000 square feet in order to approve a rezoning case that would result in a triplex conversion. So that effectively meant that I had to recommend denial because there weren't 9,000 square feet on the lot. And the, the rationale behind the duplex-triplex conversion guidelines requirement of 9,000 square feet just was disjointed from this case. The 9,000 square foot minimum didn't make sense to us there. So that's a great example, Commissioner.
Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Yang. And I think that I'll give sort of an inside outside perspective on this one. I was on the planning staff in 2009 and worked on this particular guidelines. And I'll just note that it's not just small landlords. It's anytime that DSI also discovers that someone has a so-called illegal unit. And one of the things that removing these guidelines, I think, is the most important thing here is the required denial if all of those standards are not met. I think that's the key linchpin in the, in the question here. And so there have been plenty of times when folks have, you know, had, they've purchased something that was a duplex or a triplex already according to the MLS listing, but then when trying to rent it or, or having an inspection from DSI, they've been told that they have a a non-conforming unit, which presents an undue hardship on those folks, I think, to some extent. And this is often in some of our older neighborhoods and in the neighborhoods where there are high proportions of immigrant families and people of color. And I, so I also think that this is an equity issue in removing these guidelines. And I'm very much as, as sort of the author of the second set of these guidelines, I'm very much in favor of removing them. And I'm really happy to see that this has come, come before us. It, it's going to make it a lot easier for us to have more units in the city without necessarily having more building or displacing folks. So I don't know if that's helpful for Commissioner Yang or the others who are concerned about eliminating them wholesale. But all of these items listed in the guidelines are actually included in the zoning code already. And it's that, that critical point where staff has to recommend denial if all of those things are not met. Which really creates issues for everybody. So I'm really excited to see this. And, and I hope we can, we can pass it. And thank you for letting me speak, Chair. Thanks.
Commissioner DeJoy, Commissioner, and then Commissioner Yang again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add that I think, that I know that many houses are already being used to house two families. And if they were inspected today, they would be cited for illegal use because it, it's not zoned accordingly or, or it violates a single family house by how, you know, so there's a lot of basement apartments out there and they're operating. And when somebody attempts to try and make that legal, this is when we run into these issues. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Yang, and then, and thank you, Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Yang, and then Commissioner Holt.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I would like to see any statistics you have staffs have or if they're prepared to collect those statistics. We know some non-conforming use. For example, in the crowded old city downtown, even most likely minorities, immigrants resides historically for whatever reason. But the concern is the living condition, whatever they are living right now is not already, is not conforming to the zoning code requirements already. So if we remove these guidelines, I'm concerning if whatever, you know, this previously non-conforming use, it will be more prevailing because people think, well, there's no guideline anymore. We can do whatever we want. Given a property, we can divide by two, divide by three, divide by four. So that living condition will be more concerning.
So Commissioner Holt and then Director, well, actually, I'll, I'll turn to Director.
Actually, I think I might have a clarifying question here for, for staff that'll, that'll help out a little bit, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So in the example you gave a little bit earlier, Mr. Wade, had that, you, you said the duplex, I think you said it was over 6,000 square feet, for example, right? But since the guideline said it had to be at least 9,000 square feet, we recommended against. However, under the same hypothetical situation, if the, if the lot had been 5,000 square feet, you know, like if this was rescinded, it did not exist, we'd still recommend against in that particular example. Is that correct?
I'm going to, a clarifying kind of yes. So what you're getting at, yes, the lot was over 6,000 square feet. The guidelines required 9,000 square feet for the staff recommendation. And so staff recommended denial to the planning commission. And then in response to planning commission, if, if they wanted to act against the staff recommendation, would need to bring their, their rationale for why they are going in the opposite direction.
Because the underlying zoning still exists, right? And then I, I, I don't know the answer to this, but maybe you could help me out here. So hypothetically, again, in the same situation, had that duplex been leveled, raised, right down to the ground and a new triplex was built there, would that generally be permitted?
They would still need to rezone, but that, the conversion guidelines would not apply. That's correct.
Right, right. And I, I guess that, I, I kind of bring that up because I, I think that points a little bit to the absurdity of what some of these, you know, these, these guidelines are. That's all I had.
Director?
Yeah, Commissioner Holt, I think that was a good example. The, the underlying zoning still, still applies, right? So they can't, you know, somebody in this situation couldn't do whatever they want. It's, it's, the standards are still there and if the commissioner, the commission has the power to approve non-conforming uses and variances in, you know, under, if, if the facts support, support that, if there's, you know, findings that are there to support that, that decision, but the, the standards can't be ignored. You know, those are zoning standards that apply. So a duplex district allows for a single family home or a duplex district, a tri, a, a district that supports three and fourplexes like RT2, that's, you have to sort of, you have to follow the minimum lot areas and, and dimensional standards for those districts. Again, somebody could ask for a variance in a certain, in a, in a, in a case, but, and, and then you, the commission has to evaluate, you know, a smaller lot size, a lighter setback based on the findings for a variance, but it, but we, we can't, you know, the commission or staff can ignore the underlying zoning that applies. That's my first point. Second point is if we were to try to do a, an assessment of, you know, non-conformities across the city, I mean, that in theory could be done, but it would be literally thousands of, of properties and probably take a very, very long time to, to look things up because oftentimes, you know, there are things that are non-conforming and we're not entirely certain, you know, they, they come to the attention when, like Commissioner Riley said, property sale happens and they get referred to DSI or something like that. So it's, it's not exactly easy to, to do that sort of analysis. That said, we are trying to, when we get the opportunity to rezone properties to a better district to reflect what's already on the ground, like a duplex or a triplex in a single family district. That's something that, that makes a lot of sense because, you know, obviously that property in most cases existed a very long time. We aren't seeing many duplexes and triplexes being built today. And so it's probably existed fine within a context of, of a neighborhood within the city. And so anyway, we're, we, we try to work with what we have. The zoning, underlying zoning still applies. The standards that apply in that district still apply. We can't ignore that. And these guidelines are super fluid. You know, they, they're, they apply on top of zoning. And they, they really limit staff and to, to extent the commission in, in the process of determining what might be appropriate for a site.
So before turning to Mr. Wade, I think, I think Commissioner Yang, right, so to Commissioner Moore's question, I, I can also think of an example typically in like a Grand Avenue setting in which the lot sizes are not big enough and, and buildings are already non-conforming for setbacks or for just for, you know, the, the size that they have for the area lot that they have, it's, it's, it just wouldn't work under today's zoning code is my, my understanding of it. And so if you have a, a, you know, a, a building, whether it's a fourplex or a bigger building that wants to add a different unit or, or a, you know, a duplex, we run into the situation, and this happened quite a bit in the BCA where the, the guidelines would recommend denial based on the size of the lot or some other parking minimum requirement or something like that that's been taken away now. But it, it is a concern. But to Commissioner Yang's point, I think he, he does raise the issue of, well, does this, does just removing this lead to the possibility of some form of abuse by landlords in some way? And, and I guess there is that concern. And perhaps, Mr. Wade, before turning to you, you know, could you just, to the point that Luis was making, could you just clarify on what the regulations would be that people would still be required to meet to be able to have a legal duplex or a legal triplex? I know you don't have to go through each, you know, zoning district and, but just a very typical scenario of what the, I, I think what Commissioner Yang is hinting at is, you know, you have a 700 square foot home or something and you convert that into a duplex or, and, and, you know, you stick 12 people in an area that's, that's too small or something like that. And, or, or something similar to that type of, of, I, I guess for lack of a better term for abuse.
Thanks for the chair. I'm going to answer very slowly because it's kind of a, it's a big question because there's such a variety of situations that that could be bringing up. And I'd welcome other staff on the call to help with the answer. If, if someone has a 700 square foot house and they tried to fit more than three people, they would, even if it's just a single family home, they're already in violation of fire occupancy code. That would, that's already a tough house to fit a couple of rooms in. And so I don't, I don't mean to
Make it a 1,400 square. I mean, it, it's just an example. And I mean, I think you answered it right there. I mean, there's still, even when we do away with this, there are still protections on what can be built.
Right, right. And so I guess some of the overall reviews, I mean, if you're going to make any conversion, regardless of conversion guidelines, you're going to have to get a building permit. And that's a huge thing. That's, that's when they really zone in on is this building adequate? Does it, you know, are you putting in a kitchen? Are there, is there enough space? Are the ceilings high enough? Any, all of residential code, Minnesota residential code, Minnesota building code, they need to get that building permit and whatever other trade permits, plumbing permits, et cetera, to do this. This, and, and this is all just sort of once it's brought above the surface. These guidelines are not preventing these families that may, or these households that may be over occupied or things like this from, from surfacing. This is not a, a communication tool. This is something where once someone is already applying for a zoning variance or a rezoning or non-conforming use permit, that is, once they already make public that they want to have another unit or they already functionally have another unit, even if it's not legal, then these conversion guidelines are sort of brought out of a, a file in the back of the office and said, okay, well, let's look at these line by line. And so this is, I, actually, this kind of leads right into my comment. This really isn't a communication piece. No one is aware of these. They just come up sort of at the end of zoning cases and say, hey, you know, you, you've already brought this to us. You've made this structure public. You've made your desired living style public, your desired occupancy public. Your, if you're coming to us for a zoning review, then probably you're also going through the building permit review and we would condition any zoning approval on that anyway. We are transitioning a lot of these to different part of staff processes that would be more public. So for instance, we're working with DSI plan review staff on coming up with really nice, concise, effectively conversion guidelines that call out zoning issues, that call out building permit issues and plumbing issues, et cetera. But they don't consist of a required staff recommendation. Again, to Commissioner Riley's point, that's, that's what make these pretty absurd. So we're not losing the wisdom, we're not losing that's what make these pretty absurd. So we're not losing the wisdom, we're not losing a a tool that helps us to catch a household that is functionally having a second or third illegal unit. This is, this is an extra piece of paper, an extra list. And we're we're keeping the wisdom. We are incorporating it into our processes in even more functional ways.
Thank you for that, Mr. Wade. Before turning to Mr. Diata, another example of how I've seen this come up is when a property is sold as a duplex or a triplex. And the new owner then wants to rent it and finds out that it's not, it's a illegal duplex or triplex. And they go to DSI and they try to get it to be conforming and that that's when they run into these obstacles of these guidelines. I'll turn over to the zoning administrator, Mr. Diata, and then I'll call on Mr. Commissioner Yang.
Commissioner, the Chair, Commissioner is D C I, the Zone Administrator. So to Michael's point, these conversion guidelines, we discover them in DSI through a permit. Somebody comes in on their own free will and they want to legalize a unit. Or they want to come in to pull a permit to do some work. And we look at it and when we ask, well, these are for open and we find out they have a second unit. It doesn't sort of match with what I have, what we have now, a DSI record as as used. So if you listen to a single family dwelling in our record, but then their plan show two units. And that's when we say, well, this is zoned properly or it's not zoned properly. If you want to do this, we're going to go through a variance and part of various, we have the conversion guidelines. And like Michael, to Michael's point, this is not a competition. Thank to the the neighborhood. Now you can sort of have a cut blance what you want to do on to turn, so to speak, illegal units or add units into into buildings. This, I think, is sort of a cleaner way to sort of get a to clean up the process as opposed to going through these conversion guidelines, which frankly, they're very cumbersome. And oftentimes, they're in contradiction with the zoning code. And the zoning code is the guiding document for land use. These conversion guidelines are more like sort of a recommendation. We recommend that if you do X, you got to have X amount of land. So this, I do think that it's a well-written document, is thoughtful. I've been here for twenty years and I've seen these variances come come in for conversion guidelines, where sometimes we we struggle to find a recommendation for denial approval. Although I would say mostly, most of them will get that approved anyway. The safety piece also would be addressed. So they're going to approve their conditions. They still got to get a building permit. So the safety element is not lost in this study that is being conducted by Michael. Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna call on the last of the people here that have their hand raised and then I think we're going to close the discussion and move on to the next item. So Commissioner Yang and then Commissioner Holt. Commissioner Yang, do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you for the context. I, my understanding is the current conversion guideline at least to help us to keep sight on what is going on. In reality, we we had the opportunity to find whatever the nonconforming usage years, even if it's illegal or whatever for historical reasons. That's good. If we don't have these guidelines properly, we will not be able to keep track on what is going on because people don't need that. Or at least the staff will not do any due diligence, right? At least in this scenario. So that's another reason, I think. Well, we we probably have to respect the current guideline, but we we may find other way to improve whatever the effectiveness or equitable usage for these guidelines. My bottom line is at least, you know, we all know the historical, historically, historical housing conditions for many immigrants. Look at the Chinatown in New York, right? A couple of decades ago, many immigrants, they were coming here, man, some of them are illegal. They don't have money. What they need is to find a place to sleep, no matter what the living condition is. And many landlord or whatever smugglers, they take full advantage of those poor people. So what we are looking right now, we better to keep those things from happening again. Thank you.
Commissioner Holt.
My my hand was raised simply, I'm ready to restate my motion that the comprehensive neighborhood planning committee recommends that the St. Paul Planning Commission rescind Resolution nine zero dash five two, known as the duplex and triplex conversion guidelines.
Okay, so the motion is to rescind the guidelines for duplex and triplexes conversions. Is there made by Commissioner Holt? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Grill, second.
All right. So by Commissioner Holt, seconded by Commissioner Grill. I don't, before, I guess I'll open it up for discussion and I'll just say this to Commissioner Yang's points. I don't, I don't want to just set aside the comments that Commissioner Yang made. I I do think there that that what he's talking about is a is a concern and certainly something that is prevalent in immigrant communities and probably just low income communities. But I don't think that what we're discussing here today is necessarily something that is going to make things worse. With regards to record keeping, if if any particular unit or any particular property wishes to create a duplex or a triplex and they don't meet the current zoning guidelines, they're still going to have to come before either the BZA or the planning commission to request some form of either rezoning or a variance or a nonconforming use. So there'll still be record keeping of that. So Commissioner Yang, I I thank you for for your comments. I do understand where you're coming from. I do think that what you're you're explaining is something that we need to discuss more about how to protect those communities through zoning and 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 through regulations. I I but in 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 truth, I I actually think that that already exists. It's more about finding those properties and then properly addressing them to the Department of Safety and Inspection than it is that we are opening some sort of floodgate for this to continue to happen. So those are my comments on that, Commissioner Yang. I do like, but I I I don't, I didn't just want to leave you hanging with the comment that you left. And I do appreciate your input on this and raising this and have allowing us to have even a discussion about it today because I think otherwise we we wouldn't. And and it does raise awareness to it. So with that said, is there any other additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we can go ahead and take a a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Very, 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 very wholeheartedly. Yes, 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 yes.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Yang.
No.
Chair Rangel Morales.
Yes.
Thirteen one.
All right. So that motion to recommend the well, to discontinue use of the guidelines for the duplex, triplex conversion guidelines is approved. Commissioner Holt, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Just one quick item, just last Wednesday, so two days ago, we got a our first information on the Hillcrest and the redevelopment there. So we'll be getting lots of information. We haven't really gotten much in the way of formal documents yet, but we did get a presentation sort of talking about Hillcrest. So and obviously Commissioner DeJoy knows a lot more about that than I do, so.
And I do think that there's, that's that is on the agenda today. So I'll move on to the next item. It's just an informational presentation by the St. Paul Port Authority with regards to the Hillcrest redevelopment.
Morning, folks. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to begin?
Yes, please.
I'll share my screen here. And are you folks seeing a blue slide?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time this morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Monty Hillman. I'm the Senior Vice President of Sustainable Development with the St. Paul Port Authority. I'm here this morning to give you really a Port Authority one on one. Understanding that members of the commission may have different backgrounds and levels of experience with what the Port Authority is. And so to the point that the commissioner made about a lot coming in the near future over the next quarter or so for the commission and for the council on Hillcrest specifically, we thought it was important to sort of level set and give everyone a shared understanding of what the Port Authority is, what it does, and how that informs our goals and aspirations for the Hillcrest site. So that will really will be the the gist of my message here this morning. I'm happy to take questions at the end here. I do have a bunch of slides. I'll try and get through them fairly quickly. So happy to answer any questions after that. The St. Paul Port Authority has been around for over eighty, eighty-five some years. We were created by the state of Minnesota. We're a separate political subdivision of the state. We have a seven member board. By statute, two of those members are city council members. The other five are business folks of various types, trades, representatives, et cetera. And we were created initially to manage the river, river commerce in the city of St. Paul. And in the nineteen sixties, some statutory changes broaden those powers to do more inland redevelopment work. We still do both. And so that's what I'm going to walk you through here today. So the mission is of the port is to be a conduit to quality job opportunities, expand the tax base, advance sustainable and equitable development, and support river commerce. The team I work on, our development team, you see the seven of us here. We're a relatively light staff of eighteen across the entire Port Authority. The development team you see here is represented by business development specialists, construction managers, property managers, contract specialists, engineers, stormwater specialists, et cetera. Some of the projects you may have heard us associated with, but not exactly maybe understand how or why. Treasure Island Center, we just opened our new offices right after Labor Day in the first floor there, right next to Walgreens. We bought the former Macy's building, defunct building and repositioned it into what it is today, something far different than abandoned department store. So hope to be able to get folks in there and see our new offices and some of the sustainability demonstration initiatives we've implemented in our new offices. This was a joint venture between the Port Authority through Capital City Properties, a nonprofit we do joint venture activity with the private sector. And so this was a joint venture, the Port Authority through CCP is still actually the majority owner of this facility. We served as a consultant to the city of St. Paul and did the construction management work and helped with financing for the public safety training facility over on the east side of St. Paul. We were deeply involved in the effort to get CHS Field located in downtown. We negotiated and conducted the acquisition of the former Diamond Products building, the old Gillette factory that was on the site. We secured and managed grant funds to clean up a bunch of the contamination that was under that building when it was demolished. We were also deeply engaged in negotiating the transactions related to the land swap, which moved the Saint Stadium, now CHS Field into downtown and allowed us to clean up the old State Fair dump, which was underneath the old St. Paul, Saint Stadium out on Energy Park Drive. We then implemented a joint venture there with United Properties. We built jointly the first lead silver multi-tenant spec industrial building in the state and leased that building up. Tierney is one of the anchor tenants out there now. And we have actually already sold that asset. Aliens Field, we served as a consultant to the city met transit and soccer team and the shopping center owner. Working for a variety of folks, trying to figure out the most efficient and effective way to clean up the contamination kind of ubiquitous across that site. We we will still serve in that role for a variety of parties as the rest of the super block gets developed. And Hillcrest, which this presentation really isn't about Hillcrest, but at the end, I do want to share some of our aspirations for Hillcrest with you and how they're informed by our mission here. So the river, you heard me mention the river. We still are very active on the river. We believe river shipping is important. It's a really key blue highway, blue interstate, if you will, connecting Minnesota to international markets. Some of the stuff coming in you see here listed and some of the stuff going out. You know, cement, we don't really have cement here in Minnesota to make concrete. And so if we get a bad flood and we shut down river shipping, we could impact construction to a great degree with the lack of ability to get cement up upriver from the south. Some other pretty crucial commodities for our industrial society. It is incredibly fuel efficient and environmentally efficient way to move massive tons of commodities. You see some comparisons here between one fifteen barge tow and over a thousand semi tractor trailers. That's a lot of diesel exhaust that we are avoiding when we ship commodities and a lot of road maintenance that those tractor trailers aren't beating up. Another cut at why river shipping, we believe, is efficient and environmentally beneficial. Since the nineteen nineties, we've been really active in what we call the modern brownfield era. In the early nineteen nineties, there were some state and federal statutes passed and some funding mechanisms created to allow for the voluntary cleanup of contaminated properties. Environmental liability prior to ninety-one-ish was so strict that it was too dangerous from a liability perspective to transact these contaminated properties. Now, Minnesota really was the first in the nation to have an MOU with EPA that allowed for our state programs with the with the pollution control agency to oversee and to bless a voluntary cleanup. And we were also one of the first, St. Paul was one of the first cities in the state to use these tools to start redeveloping brownfields into business centers in the early nineteen nineties. We, of course, are looking at hazardous materials in buildings when we do this work, contaminated soil, soil gases and groundwater contamination, while we try to remove these barriers to investment. When we transact these properties, I look at our portfolio of of sort of fifty prod, fifty transactions, fifty deals over the last twenty-five years. All but six of them have been subsidized land sales to a business, to a business end user. The other six are these joint ventures I've talked about. They are kind of the exception, not the norm. For those subsidized land sales for that twenty-five year period, they've all required, when you get subsidized land in a transaction with Port Authority, what we call a workforce agreement. Think of it like a community benefits agreement. It has dictated for all those years, minimum job density requirements, wage requirements, local hiring goals. And what I can report is that we are currently reworking them. This was a thirty-year-old tool that myself and our team inherited. I've been there seventeen years, so I've done a number of transactions with our current workforce agreements. But we are retooling them to redeploy a more nuanced, a little more sophisticated version of a workforce agreement. And Hillcrest will be the first site we will deploy that on. We'll come back to that a little later. So what is all this activity generated in cleaning up these contaminated brownfield sites and creating these light industrial business centers? There are seventeen of these industrial business centers located throughout the city of St. Paul with over five hundred companies. business centers located throughout the city of St. Paul with over 500 companies, 25,000 jobs, and over $12 million annual property tax revenue. Really is the sort of unknown, unseen, commercial-industrial backbone of the city of St. Paul. Here's a few before and afters. Williams Hill was a very early one in the mid-'90s. Great Northern, I come from working for the North End and Frogtown neighborhoods before I was at the Port Authority, and so I worked, at the time, these projects were getting done, and it was a very exciting time to see the old Max and Steel smokestack come down and to see these clean, modern, light industrial businesses come in with living wages and low barriers to entry, most of which have career pathways. Energy Park really predated the modern brownfield era in some ways. This was a 1980s superfund site we cleaned up. Crosby Lake, where Summit Brewing is. Beacon Bluff is, was the old 3M campus on the east side of St. Paul. This is, I managed that project for the last 10 years, and we now actually, I believe, have, with a sale to Willet Bakery, who's building on the last industrial parcel there, we will have beat our 1,000-job goal at Beacon Bluff. That'll start construction in February. We do a lot of this work for others. I think you heard me mention a couple of examples through an entity called Port Consulting. We've been asked over the years to apply this knowledge to help other public-facing organizations get this work done. So you've heard about some of the St. Paul projects. We're currently working on an 18-acre site up in the city of Bemidji. Red Wing, we actually have wrapped up with, and North St. Paul, we're just getting started. Our goal is to advance sustainable development. So since 2003, buyers of Port Authority properties have gone through a green design review process, whole-building energy simulation, et cetera, to make sure we're building efficient buildings. These are, this is a solar installation on the top of our joint venture where the former St. Stadium was, out on Energy Park Drive. Just some stats on why we all know that it's important to address energy efficiency and carbon emissions from the built environment. For a couple of years now, we've been shopping a net-zero prototype for a light industrial building and trying to find the right business owner or developer to build that with us. We're going quite a bit further in our initiatives at Hillcrest, which I'll hear about in a second. We do energy financing. We are probably the third-largest PACE property-assessed clean-energy lender in the country, and we've got projects all over the state of Minnesota, energy efficiency upgrades, and renewables, largely solar installations. Trillion BTU was the first program to finance those. PACE is, was the subsequent program that's assisting with collateral, basically, for those loans. And it's doing a lot, frankly. We're very proud of that program. We obviously don't do this work alone. We do this certainly in partnership with the city and many other entities and stakeholder groups. We are, the development team you saw there, and more of our staff even beyond the development team are either licensed agents or licensed commercial real estate brokers, and so, of course, we are deep into the development community through that aspect. These are some of our current partnerships. I'll point out the East Side Employment Exchange is 12 organizations working on the east side of St. Paul, cultural and workforce organizations to help provide job candidates to businesses. We've partnered with them. We help fund the East Side Employment Exchange along with the East Side Funders Group to make those connections and to assist in connecting local residents with jobs in our business centers. So just a little bit about Hillcrest before I wrap up. Why Hillcrest? There's 70 feet of topography from the top to the bottom of the site. Until the master plan started, there was really no planning, no plating, no infrastructure. About $3 million of contamination from mercury that was sprayed all over the site for decades, and some challenges. And we believe we are uniquely positioned to solve those challenges and prepare land for private investment. We will do that through our lens of equitable and sustainable development, and the tool we are using is what's called LEED for Communities. I'm a U.S. Green Building Council Board Member, past president here in the state of Minnesota. You might have heard of USGBC's LEED certification for buildings. They also have a LEED certification for cities and communities. We are right now in the pre-certification phase in, with US Green Building Council at the platinum level, which is the highest level. There are very few LEED for Communities platinum certifications in the world, and it requires you hit the mark for sustainability in all of these categories, which happen to be all of the categories that, as a land developer, these are the things the Port Authority will touch. You can see the list here. You can see all the credits here. I will point out, this credit right here, energy and greenhouse gas emissions. We can get up to 19 points. We get to 19 points, that means the site is net zero, and that is our aspirational goal. I talked earlier about a new workforce agreement. We, for about three months now, have been meeting with a series of stakeholders to prop up, we started with these tent poles, and we have to build a new mousetrap, which is a more equitable and more granular focus on the wealth creation aspects of these workforce agreements. So that will be coming forward. We'll be approving that hopefully by mid-next year, so it will be in place by the time we're ready to start doing transactions at Hillcrest. We're looking at the project ecosystem. This is, I actually borrowed this from Upper Harbor Terminal. We're consulting, we're a sustainability consultant to United Properties over in Minneapolis on Upper Harbor Terminal, and this was their take on all of the scopes of work, all of the disciplines that it really takes to pull off one of these large-scale redevelopments, and figuring out how to focus and work with folks like the East Side Area Business Association. We're excited to work with them. They've been a partner of ours for many, many years, and we're excited to try and figure out how do we advertise this scope of work, much of which we won't control, private industries will control, but how do we make those business-to-business connections to provide additional economic opportunity for our community? We are piloting something called JUST with our largest engineering consultants at Hillcrest. JUST is the International Living Future Institute's voluntary social justice scorecard. We want to find a tool, and we are checking to see if this is the tool or a good tool, that helps us report back to community, to stakeholders, on how equitable our spend of public resources Early on in the process, we began conversations, probably two years ago now, with the administration about an effort to make Hillcrest a net-zero site, the site in its entirety. And we believe, we asked ourselves internally, so we do support a carbon-free community at Hillcrest, to the extent that it does reduce social and economic disparities, that it improves the marketability of the site, that we don't price the site out of the market, and that we do all of this in an effort to bring joy to the community. When we have clean air, clean water, when we're assisting in solving the climate crisis while reducing social and economic disparities, we believe that will help bring a sense of joy. We looked all around the world for a playbook as to how to do this. You can certainly go online and look at the American Institute Architects 21st Century Development Framework and Case Studies. We've looked at case studies all over the world. There isn't anything that we can tell is directly applicable to our situation and that has actually accomplished this. So we've spent the last 18 months creating it out of thin air, more or less. We, if we get to net zero, to that 19 points in LEED for Communities, we will be net-zero energy, net-zero carbon on-site for buildings, transportation, infrastructure, for Scope 1 and 2 greenhouse gas emissions. This is one of the studies that we've done to figure out how to do this. We're currently focusing in on bundle one, which we believe is doable in the marketplace, which gets us most of the way there. We're still noodling with this 1.9 tons per capita that we have left, and most of it is in the transportation and the travel sector. To get buildings and infrastructure down this far, we need to deploy 12 to 14 megawatts of solar, largely rooftop solar on-site. We can pace-finance that, as we've done throughout the state of Minnesota, to the tune of about $300 million, what we've done across the state, not at Hillcrest. We need to deploy a district energy system, which we are analyzing and doing feasibility studies on right now, aquifer thermal energy storage system. And we need buyers of land to build super-efficient buildings, which, as the landowner, we believe we can set a target of energy efficiency, and we are still trying to figure out, we've defined the net-zero game goal. We have figured out the strategies to get there. We have costed all of those strategies, and now we are working feverishly over the next six months or so to figure out how to finance all of this. Some other building and energy use stuff, we won't get into, energy efficiency strategies, these are all the things we looked at, basically built an energy model of the entire site. Some of the travel strategies it will take to get there, all in play. This is a new concept we have brought up to the community to sort of gauge the temperature on, and it's something we're excited about. Years ago, we started talking about the amenitization of industrial space, the idea that employers want to be where employees want to be, and pretty common sense, employees want to be around amenities. And so we built a plaza with public art and interpretive information out at Beacon Bluff, a beautiful public plaza in between Vomela and East Side Family Clinic. Here, we're taking a little different approach, and we are proposing and analyzing, what if this was an arts and employment district? These are just placeholders to try and illustrate the theme as we think through this. But what, how much more engaging could these buildings be with a community-focused art theme, with community artists curated by a community group? We've had early conversations with the East Side Arts Council, who we worked with at Beacon Bluff, to great success. So, just a few of the things that are exciting us at Hillcrest. Much more to come on land use and master plan and all that. I'll save that for the PEG staff, who have done a great job, have been great partners, working through the master plan with us. I will say, in closing, we are really excited about the opportunity at Hillcrest to add what we think of as net positive tax base to the city. These commercial-industrial properties generally use less in city services than they pay in property taxes, and this is a great opportunity to add a bunch of net positive tax base to the city. The golf course itself was previously taxed for decades at agricultural rates, is how golf courses are assessed. So we've got a great opportunity for job creation, housing creation, and tax base creation, along with a healthy dose of sustainable development here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hillman, from any commissioners? I'm not seeing any. So I think, I'll just go ahead and thank you for your time coming in this morning and giving us this presentation and overview on what the Port Authority does and how it all fits into Hillcrest. Still not seeing any questions, so again, thank you, Mr. Hillman, for coming in and taking the time to educate us on what you do.
I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you in the very near future here, so thank you all for your time. I look forward to the future discussions.
All right. So moving on to the next item on the agenda is Transportation Committee. I'll turn it over. Oh, I believe Commissioner Rizberg may have written a comment that he had to leave attend. Oh, Commissioner Rizberg's still on. Commissioner Rizberg. Oh, he is no longer on. I'll turn it to Mr. Dermody. Mr. Dermody, would you care to comment on any?
No, I'll just note, for those who can't access the chat, Commissioner Rizberg's report is that there was an interesting presentation this past Monday about safehouse schools projects from Public Works and the, and SPPS staff, and he thought it was a great example of collaboration between the two organizations. The next meeting is January 10th at 4:30, and the agenda for that is to be determined.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Dermody. The next item on the agenda is Communications and Nominations, is Commissioner Underwood's, I think she was going to be gone today, so I'll turn it over to Director Padilla.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. She had a meeting, kind of in the middle of this meeting, and had hoped to get back, but apparently she's not back. The Communications Nominations Committee was up at the crack of dawn this morning, looking at Planning Commission applicants as well as our draft annual report for 2021. That's, both of those things are still in process. We are reviewing applications for our upcoming vacancies and current vacancies for the Planning Commission and hope to have the annual report at our annual meeting tentatively set for January 21st. That is our report. There's a bit of homework for the committee as well.
All right. Any questions for Director Padilla? Moving on to the next item on the agenda is Taskperson Lee Son Reports. I'll turn it over to Commissioner DeJoy for any update first.
Thank you, Chair Rangel Ronhel Morales. So, the Hillcrest Community Advisory Committee concluded its work on December 14th in guiding a draft of the master plan. Our mission was to advise the city on community issues and priorities related to the master plan for redevelopment. It's a 112-acre site, and our first meeting was held on October 19th, and we've been, we've held 18 meetings over the course of two years, two-plus years. During that process, we considered several scenarios, and we honed in on a final draft plan, and we understand that there's other processes and public hearings and opportunities for the community to weigh in on this draft plan. We feel that it was a reflection that it, of the priorities that we set early on. We had affirmed 20 community priorities to guide the plan, and we feel that it achieves the development goals of creating approximately 1,000 jobs and 1,000 households. It takes community input into proper account, recognizes the site as a neighborhood node, it provides walkability to support public health, has thoughtful transportation connections to the west, encourages community agriculture to provide healthy food, and will result in remediation of the site's pollution. There were concerns, and we mostly, that there was a bit too much range given for the administrative modifications to maybe change some of the things that we felt were higher priorities. And the aspects regarding sustainability and art are dependent upon funding, and we thought that those are very important and want to continue to monitor it to make sure those goals are achieved. So next month, there'll be a letter presented along with the draft of the plan from the committee, talking about the work that we did and going into detail, more detail about what I just reported on. There was quite a bit of community engagement. We, as you know, three months after we started our monthly meetings, COVID hit, and we went, we had to readjust, as the whole world had to readjust. But we felt that there was quite a bit of community engagement, and that will continue. But what you'll be presented with next month, hopefully, is the draft of the master plan. And so, our work is done, and there's more work to be done, and I appreciated the previous presentation from Monty, talking about the importance of sustainability, because that was a high priority, among many others. So that's my report.
Thank you for that, Commissioner DeJoy. Any questions from other commissioners?
I don't know. Bill Dermody's on the call here. If you want to add anything to this, Bill, he was the staff person that guided us through.
Sure, if it's all right, Chair. I just wanted to add one thing, which was, thanks to Commissioner DeJoy for co-chairing for the last couple of years, this Community Advisory Committee and guiding them through the work. Really appreciate you and Linda Martinez-Higgins, the other co-chair from Maplewood. Y'all did a great job keeping us moving and really, at the staff level, appreciated your feedback throughout the process, so thank you.
Well, it was my pleasure. Thank you. Well, it was my pleasure, thank you.
Chair, are you there?
Sorry about that, everybody, my internet dropped for a second there. So I assume Commissioner DeJoy, will this be your last presentation on Hillcrest?
Next month, there'll be our letter from the co-chairs with a lot of details about our support and some of our concerns, and then the draft plan will go to, I believe the next step is the Neighborhood and Comprehensive Planning Committee. And then there'll be, it goes to the full Planning Commission and public hearings and to the city council, so there'll be a lot more opportunity for community input.
All right, thank you for that. So I guess I'll keep calling on you at the next meeting, just so you can present that letter.
Sure, thank you.
Moving on to the next other task force is Commissioner Grill.
Yep, this is Commissioner Grill. So the Riverview Station area Task Force Committee met on Tuesday evening, and the both of the meetings were on the Randolph Station area, and it included a couple very early on examples of the intersections in which that station could actually be placed. And so we had a, I think, a good, very preliminary discussion about that. And then our next meeting, which will be in January, should cover the St. Clair area station, the station area. And more information on the Riverview Stationary Task Force can be found on the Ramsey County website.
Thank you for that, Commissioner DeJoy, I mean, Commissioner Grill. Any questions for Commissioner Grill? All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is old business, and then new business, or anything a commissioner would like to add to the agenda at the upcoming So we will go ahead and adjourn the December 17th, 2021 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thanks to everybody for joining, and I hope everybody has a good weekend and stay warm. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, thank you, Ron.